Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Council Budget Work Session for February eighteenth. We're now called to order. I'll begin by asking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda, agenda for the meeting. Moved by Councilmember McBride, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any amendments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Hi.
Hi. Any names? The eyes have it, the agenda is approved. The first item is approval of minutes for the Town Council Close Session held on January twenty eighth. The session was closed pending Maryland Article, Maryland State Statute, with the articles that outline permission to close the meeting under consultation with legal counsel, along with consultation with staff, consultants, and others. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Moved by Councilmember Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any corrections or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Hi.
Any names? The eyes have it, the minutes are approved. And next we will call for a motion to approve the January thirtieth Town Council Emergency Close Session Minutes where the town met, again pursuant to general provisions under Maryland State Statute to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride, any corrections or changes to the minutes that need to be noted, Councilmember Dixon?
You just mentioned January thirty or twenty thirteen.
No, January thirtieth, the second seven minutes.
We had a, we had a phone call, it was a, it was bound by phone call. Okay, that was a phone call meeting, so we did.
It was the day of the trial for the temporary restraining order where we had to give the town administrator input. How we wanted to advise the attorney.
I remember now.
Okay. Any other questions or changes before we call for the vote? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Hi.
Hi.
Any names? The eyes have it, the minutes are approved. And then finally, call for a motion to approve the February tenth, twenty twenty five Close Session Meeting Minutes. The council met under two provisions pursuant to general provision Article three dash three zero five, Section B, and also seven, in summary, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in state. Or two, and also number two, the second point, which is Article seven, the mayor and council met to consult with council to obtain legal advice, is there a motion to approve?
Move.
So moved by Councilmember Dixon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride, any questions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Hi.
Hi. Any names? The eyes have it, the minutes are approved. And now, ladies and gentlemen, the moment we have been waiting for, the FY twenty twenty six budget presentation, Town Administrator, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is the second session, which we again have kept our exciting presentation format. This is because it's a bang up here, so we can go to the next slide. That's okay, so we're gonna provide a couple for tonight, we're gonna talk about some information slides, which will kind of give you some more context on where we were, how the taxes, things are put together, things like that. The next one is that we'll, we'll provide you some revenue estimates and options, oh, I was trying to go through the first slide. That's all right, no worries. The next step, then we'll go through the events budget, then we'll go through the council budget with you, and then there might be a little other items that you may want to ask, and then we'll talk about the next steps again, sorry.
That's fine.
So the revenue estimates, what right now staff is developing some estimates of taking into account the assessed valuation and previous tax estimates. We're also looking at other available sources for new revenue. When I was driving in today, because I've been out of power personally at home for the last weekend, and I don't have, I have BG and ENE at Pepco, but I was noticing the, the cost of my electricity. And I was thinking, you know, we raised our, we did raise the fees on our, on our utilities tax, and something that we may want to consider again this year, so we were going to put together some options for you to look at that again, because residents have a PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, it's going to raise rates, and we really haven't received anything additional from that. And, and be honest with you, we think there are a lot of infrastructure within the town of Bladensburg that we're responsible for and that they're responsible for as far as the polls and things like that, which is what their tax is based on. So we're gonna put some ones together for that. And then look at a couple of different options as we look at real estate taxes. Mr. Tannelli has some information tonight on the constant yield that we're gonna share, and some information on where we are, given the new evaluations. So that's just an overview on the revenue estimates, Mr. Tannelli, I just want to maybe give you the floor to kind of talk a little bit more about the constant yield, and if you want to share that kind of information.
Yeah, we had the, by the time I sent this out, I sent you last year's tax assessments, and by the time, and on Friday, we got the updated tax assessments for FY twenty six. But they are just about in line with the, what we were estimating they would come in at around a five percent increase total. It's actually like a five point three percent increase in assessments total, so that adds a little bit revenues. I can show you real quick.
Yeah, I think it's good to see, because I think the interesting thing about constant yield is that because we already have our tax rate for the apartments at point eight, I think it's showing a, it's showing you both.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta flip between shared screens, okay. So this is just the residential and commercial tax assessments. Last year, the base was estimated at three hundred ninety-four million. This year increased to four hundred and twenty-five million, which is a, out of five, or I'm sorry, that's a seven percent increase, which is invert, an inverted relationship with the tax rate. So it goes off seven percent constant yield rate, once you drop the tax rate to seven percent below that, you know, so you have the same tax revenues coming in, but we just historically just, just kept their tax rate the same. And we don't have to go through the constant yield process again if we are keeping the current residential and commercial tax rates. Won't have to go through the hearing, won't have to do the advertising with, with that law change, I think it was twenty twenty-three when that changed. So that's that assessment, let me show you another one. And just for the apartments, there's always a live here, it's going to time I wanna share and so, okay, we estimated this year two hundred million on the apartments, that's the ones that are being taxed at point eight zero. That's the ones that we increased last year. And it actually came in one percent higher actuals. This year it grew by another one percent to two hundred and four million. And, I mean, that's just like a small percentage, and that's why the constant yield rate is below that point eight, because I want you to lower the tax rate by the amount of increase that the assessments have, it's like an inverted relationship. So that's where that came from. Then as far as the, as far as the actual calculations, just so I can show you. Arthur, dead air and all.
No, no worries, I'm looking over, it is coming. You don't get asked, that's the only thing.
Oh my gosh, like I'm crawling. Okay, um, everybody see this now? Okay, and, and nobody can read it, all right, so.
The vision test.
Yeah. I don't know if that's any better or not.
A little bit, but it could be better. The council members online, can you see this, okay?
How about now?
I don't see them.
I see it real good, so I'm good.
So this is just in my spreadsheet form, just so I can keep track of everything. And this for the apartments, as I said, the assessments were two hundred and two million for FY twenty-five, we projected two hundred million, that's where we got the one point six million of revenues. And it went up point eight percent this year, so we are budgeting one, I talk in round figures, you all, okay, so I'm not gonna say one million six hundred thirty-two thousand and eighty-five, I'd just say one point six million that we are expected to generate from the apartment tax rate. Residential assessments, they went up, as I said, seven point four percent. They went up from three hundred ninety-four million up to almost four hundred and twenty-four million for FY twenty-six. And aggregate is four point seven, six, four million seven hundred sixty-seven thousand. The budget right now had four point eight million, just to keep it as a round figure, because the, the budget was done before, I had this information, but it's pretty darn close, it's only off by thirty-two thousand. And so FY twenty-five budget was four, four million five hundred sixty thousand. FY twenty-six, we're estimating four point eight million, which is a five, five point three percent increase.
And so just for residents who are watching, the assessments went up basically on the homes or residential properties because the home values increased.
Yes, yeah.
So I think that's important to highlight, because oftentimes people try to put down the value of homeownership in our community, and this is a clear demonstration that it is worth investing in a home in the town of Bladensburg, as you see the appreciation year over year, and then also with the anticipated increase in FY twenty twenty-six, so I just wanted to call that out.
If this is larger safe space, I've seen, I mean, this is a, a, a large jump on top of a jump of last year of five percent, and top of the jump of previous year, five percent. So that's why I say homeownership is your biggest and best investment, you can see.
So there has, I'm sorry, this is a question, so there has been speculation just with new administration, different fiscal priorities, concerns about potential recessions in the next couple of years, and so from that standpoint, is it safe to anticipate at this level and not be a little more conservative, or are you confident that?
I'm confident, because real estate, because there's a, real estate keeps increasing, it's, it's hard to find, I mean, amount of properties being bought, or people trying to seek them are far exceeding available properties. There's an inventory problem, we have an inventory problem, it drives the prices up, and it drives the market up. And everybody thought the high rates right now, it's seven point, I guess, on second home, it's like seven point eight percent, on primary homes, it's like six point eight. Everybody thought that because of the increasing rates is gonna pull the real estate market, it had no effect on it right now. Just because the, the main thing is the demand is so much higher than the current inventory, because the people that are sitting on the inventory, like your homes and everything, you're, you're in at two point nine percent, three percent, four percent, and you're not gonna sell and get back into something more expensive, because now, you know, you, you sell on profit, great, but then you got to buy in at the same, at the same price, plus at a higher interest rate. And that two, three percent higher interest rate, I mean, that's hundreds of dollars per month.
Right, over twenty years or thirty years.
Just over a year, it's, you know, it's thousands of dollars.
And also, to be clear, the assessments are not actual, they're not always, they don't always track actual home values from the standpoint of the, they're not, they're not your average sale. The assessment, the assessors use a, they use something close, but it's not always, it's not as closely tied to the market, and it takes a three-year average, is my understanding of the assessments as well, so they're much more conservatively based. And then the other part about the difference between assessments and let's say home values is the fact that, you know, I'm not sure of here, but I, I think, you know, we have a very very low number of people who get their houses, we assess or fight their assessments from the state. So then that, that's why these numbers are very sound, because you're not going to have a lot of people that may say, challenge their assessment. And when they don't challenge you, I mean, because you can always do that, I hate to, but I mean, it's
No, I didn't do the assessment on that.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can challenge your assessment, and if you do, that changes your evaluation. You don't have a large number of people doing that, so the number of the four twenty-three is actually very stable for the town at this point, because of the fact that you don't, you have a low number of people that actually do challenge those assessments, so that's the other factor that, like from the standpoint of this year to next year, these funds are usually pretty guaranteed, and they're, the other issue is that they also come from mortgages, mortgage companies, versus a lot of independent people making those property tax payments. So you have, you do have a lower rate of, as far as of people defaulting on their property tax in this area. So that's, so that's why it's so stable, it's one of our most stable revenues, even with some economic uncertainty that we may see in the next year, there is a lot of stability in that, in this particular revenue source versus others, I would say.
I just wish we had a sense of how many residents were federal government employees because of
Right, that's your
And I didn't want to go there, that's why I was just kind of saying, due to changes in administration, that is a real consideration, because so many people, just in Maryland, DC, and Virginia, have worked for the federal government. So I'm hoping you're right in that.
I wonder if we could look
I think that's gonna drive wages down, because again, you have more of a
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You have, you have more supply over here, people looking for jobs, and you know.
I would, I would say maybe the other thing that we may can look at is maybe, Vito, is to go back to assessments from twenty thirteen, I would say fourteen, and maybe look at the difference in those, and kind of do a percentage, so that we can then give you, you know, if we wanted to, let's say, conservatively say a percentage or two, but I can't see us going down more than a couple percentage points on this, because it's not, one, you need all the revenue you can get, but two, just as far as the likelihood of it, you, you've had a stability, but you, you've never had an administration like this, but you have had a stability in this area, that we can depend, that you can say, I mean, you, this, this kind, this area did not have what we had when I was in Las Vegas. Now, we did have thirty, forty percent defaults and lost property tax revenue, when we never would have thought we would have lost it, so I've seen it happen, but I've just never seen it happen in this area to that extent. But we've had, I've had where we've like a twenty percent default rate on your property taxes, and what that can do, but what actually happened there is the mortgage company still paid property taxes first. We just had losses to our sales tax, because the mortgage companies will keep the taxes in place, because they don't want to lose them to tax sales. So you're not gonna lose as many property ta, mortgage, if, if you have a majority of mortgage properties, you will still get your income on property tax assessments, only when you have individual owners who will default. So that really will depend on how your
Taxes. First.
Yeah, your taxes get first. Does that, is there, does that make sense to the council?
Okay.
Mr. Vito, feelings new to the assessment for commercials?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, we did. I mean, that, that's, that's the interesting one, that's what we wanted to show you.
Now, this is, I don't, you know.
We haven't done that, you didn't have a chance to do that one, did you?
Oh, yeah.
I would see these, I asked to see that.
I mean.
A breakdown within the residential and
It's about one hundred forty mil, one hundred forty million, one thirty.
Yeah, it's about, so.
Yeah, it's about one forty, that's the new amount, one hundred forty million dollars. Then, I don't know what last year was, but right now it's like one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine.
Yeah.
I was, I was like, I know, I know the amount of how much we have, but I don't know the fluctuation yet, so, I mean, I do know that for FY twenty-six is a hundred and thirty-nine million approximately.
So there's a change over.
Yeah, he's, he's making changes on his spreadsheet right now, I'll show you.
Those are my notes and then there's, you know.
And there's the notes, no.
All right, so here is the, yeah, they're called shell, too.
One thirty-five, yeah.
It was one thirty-eight, five, one hundred thirty-eight million five hundred eighty-eight thousand for the commercial and industrial assessments. If we, if, if we take it up five percent, so we're estimating at a hundred and forty-five million, and at the current tax rate, it'll be almost one point one million dollars of revenues. And I think I have, let me see something, and just in case you want to see where that came from, yes, you do. It comes from, bear with me, just in case you all asked about it.
Okay, that's the real vision test.
Yeah. Can you see that?
Like, you know what I'm looking at, I can't see it here, okay?
Okay, so. So I asked the county to send me, you know, where this is all coming from, and they sent me a blurry copy, you know, that, that, I'm sorry, but this is the best I received.
And we can probably print it.
It's not in very, um, hold on, I'm trying to get this over, okay, so. This is the assessments as of FY twenty-five. You can see, the commercial is here, that's seventy-four million, you all can see this.
That's one ninety-seven five, right?
Hold on, I'm trying to move over, I, I can't see it on the screen, can be a little side. Okay, so.
Oh, seventy-four, sorry, I was going to apartments.
Okay, yeah, so we have the apartments at seventy-four million. Industrial, and you can see we have eighty-five accounts, which is eighty-five properties, I assume. Industrial, sixty-two million, that's another seventy-seven properties. And condo commercial, another fourteen for one point three million. That makes up the commercial and industrial tax base. And they're all, and they're taxed at the same rate as real, as the general property.
Seven point seven four.
Yeah. So that's where, and you can see, you know, there's some exemptions down here that decrease, that that aren't included here. These are gonna be your religious and nonprofit properties, your properties owned by Womata, the county, WSSC, and all these, you can see there's, you know, there's a fair amount, we have almost, I'd say what, eleven, eleven percent of the properties in town that are exempt. So all the schools, guys, you have to think about that, too, schools take up a large piece of property.
Do they provide the breakdown in terms of how it is working out above with residential and apartments and commercials, so you know which are churches, which are schools, which are
That, that code, that code is
Those are these codes on the side.
Yeah, that code is buried in here.
Six, six.
Actually, and I have somewhere, because, yeah, I'll find that out for you, I'll find out.
I'm wondering if the twenty-three, I would say the twenty-three million is schools.
Yeah, it has to be, I mean.
By the thirty-five, by the thirty-five million.
Those are the largest, I, I assume that the largest lots, and a lot of times schools have multiple lots that they're sitting on.
Or thirty-five million would be schools, one of those is for schools.
So I have a thought for revenue generation there, but I'll reserve it.
Oh, really? And it's also, it's also town Bladensburg property, too.
Yeah, because what I'm wondering is as a way to generate more revenue, even though it would cost us something, is, could we, I don't know if anyone's done this, but could the town talk to the school system and say, look, we will maintain your properties? And that way we keep the look and feel, I'm just thinking of the elementary school, for example, and what we had to go through, you had to go down their chief to get them to fix it up, whereas if they had an agreement with us and we just maintain them, then it's done on a more regular basis than being bundled in with hundreds of schools, or however many schools across the county and the maintenance, because that does become a public safety concern when you have those kinds of, you know, structures and unsafe situations being I guess formed on school property, but because maintenance isn't out there on a regular basis the way our folks are driving around town, those kinds of things can get missed and turned into major safety problems down the road.
I would say the only issue that we may have from the schools is the fact that they do have specific staff that are in unions that maintain, that, that's part of their job description, even though they may not do it as frequently as we may like it.
That's the challenge.
That would be your challenge, I would say, for the schools to say, we're going to outsource a portion of, let's say, let's say, let's say we were just cutting grass, for example. And they do, that they have contracts for that, or they have a, or they have people that do that, that would be my only challenge, but we have talked with them in regards to some, because we did meet the person who was in charge of maintenance with, I think, with Councilwoman. So we can, we can send something to them, we said we would be open to that, and I did send an email about the back, especially the property along the back. We did talk about that, and that hasn't, we, we haven't really gotten a lot of follow-up on it, but we could do that during this budget process, let you know, let's say, if we took over that, like, how much would that maintenance cost us? And then, you know, whether or not they would be willing to reimburse the town for our costs, because it does have a cost to us as well.
Yeah, and it just, it's a shame, because sometimes I just pick on the summer months. Sometimes they feel like they can neglect it, but with rain, the warmer temperatures, the grass grows faster than they're coming out. And it just, it creates some unsafe conditions sometimes, especially at night, you've got these overgrown, unkept areas, the police get called, and they're going in, and they don't really have proper visibility into this situation.
To the council members online, I apologize, we cannot see you on the screen, I just want to pause and see.
Yeah, while sharing, it takes, it takes them off, yeah, so that's why, while we're done talking, I tried to drop this down, so you can see council numbers up there.
I don't see it.
But
Yeah, we don't have any hands, so we have any hands.
So just so you can see, the I, I, go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm here.
Okay.
The industrial and commercial make up a third of our tax base, so just as so, and two-thirds is the, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I need backup, I'm sorry, y'all.
You're all in.
Yeah, the, the apartments take up one-third of our tax base, and the other two-thirds is the residential, industrial, and commercial. I can further break that down if we need to, so.
Yeah, the apartments are, yes, that's true.
You mentioned earlier that the apartment assessment was increased by what percent?
Yeah, that's almost one percent.
Almost.
They didn't.
Instead of zero point zero eight.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only thing, I mean, I would assume, I mean, those are, I, I, I don't know how they assess them, honestly. Because, and really the, the commercial properties as well, it's much easier, I would think, you know, to argue and justify on the residential, but, yeah.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Tannelli, so the sixty-seven percent you said was residential, industrial, and commercial, that number, and the thirty-three percent is made up by
Just apartments.
Just apartments, yeah. And I'm gonna find where it's actually one forty-five million over, one second. It's a total assessed, what's the total assessed?
It's one forty-five.
No, I'm saying the, the total assessment of total assessed property.
Six twenty-seven, isn't it?
Four, but, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, so. So the six hundred twenty-seven total assessed. So out of the six hundred and twenty seven total assessments, including all properties in town, all taxable properties in town, a hundred and. A hundred and fifty million of that is for industrial and commercial. So, so that's.
Six hundred and twenty seven million total, a hundred, I was like, you're gonna make me do that in my head. Ten percent is uh sixty, so yeah, so sixty million, sixty.
But it goes to show how important our.
Yeah, so, yeah, so a quarter of the residential, industrial and commercial property total is just for. Commercial, commercial, industrial. Yeah.
That's huge.
So, I mean, just when you see it like that, you know, it's um.
So then, I think the next slide that we were going to show you, and I'm just gonna go back to the slide presentation about the penny issue. Um I think we've talked about in the past, for every penny of taxable income. It is, it produces about fifty thousand dollars of revenue. So like when you made the change last year um to the um two point eight. You, you experienced, it was like a jump of, was it three hundred thousand? There you go, there's a penny one, yeah, where's that one?
Any ones, I'm, I'm trying to get the presentation, maybe you all, so you can see.
Twenty one, uh twenty one six, okay, I thought it was fifty.
Well, we haven't broken out, but it's fifty including the. So the FY twenty six apartment assessments, okay, there's some quick math for you all, okay, um. Is two hundred and six thousand dollars, every penny of tax is worth twenty one thousand dollars of tax revenues to the town. Um so you can see the um. The tax rate of. If we move the ta- I'm sorry, the tax rate of a sense of the assessed value is at one ninety six hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Um which we're, which we are projecting, but any move in that rate. Um by a penny increases it by twenty one thousand dollars. And sorry about the typo right there. So if you multiply that by, say, a five, by five cent increase, it's five cents times twenty one thousand, a hundred and three thousand dollar increase in revenues. Not that we're doing that, but just wanted to show you how, how the math works, um. And for the residential and commercial, every penny of tax is worth uh forty one thousand eight hundred. That again, this is the residential, commercial, industrial combined. That forty one thousand eight hundred times seventy four cents. Uh per one hundred dollars of assessed value is at three million ninety three thousand dollars. So any penny of change of that rate is um additional forty one thousand eight hundred dollars of revenues. So just so you can see what tax, what a change in tax rate does, again. Ignore this down here for the, you know, for, uh I, I just did this to, to show, you know. The impact of, you know, any kind of movement on the tax rate, so.
Alright, we better let, get him, cause it's already six o'clock.
Oh my gosh.
So long on revenues, but we thought it was important to kind of show you this, and so. So then I think we can go on to the coun- council budget, and I'm, so I know that you guys wanna dig into this, and we wanna make sure in the events budget. So you want us to dig into the advanced budget first, or the council budget?
Um we can start with the events, it looks like that's what you have up.
It's the, it's that report from Ray, we don't have it.
Give me one second, you all.
You want me to make a.
No, I, 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 it, it's online, isn't it?
Yes.
There you go. Yes. I mean, events budget, so I'm gonna hand this off to you.
Okay, so Ray has put together some of the events that we have every year on his side. This is not including the police events, um from the standpoint of the count, because this is part of the council budget. So we, the police, uh police events are in police budget, so that's why we wanted to kind of make sure that we kept this here. Um so I think, starting in July, we have a July fourth um project, I mean, after July fourth, sorry, the Bladesburg fireworks. We're, we're proposing a, the same, about the same scope, but it's the July, um the July event. Really takes up about, let's say, forty percent of our budget at the.
It is by far the largest.
About forty percent of our budget for the year is the fireworks. Um.
And can you remind us, I know it's probably broken out in the detail, but. When we first started this, I think the cost for the fireworks was what, like fifteen thousand dollars or something?
Yeah.
Now with post covid, with inflation and everything.
Yeah, it was, we spend about, we spend close to ten.
Actually, yeah, we got it cheaper.
Yeah, for the.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because we uh changed vendors.
Yeah.
Um but the problem before was trying to book July fourth fireworks. When you're new, just starting to book July fourth fireworks, you're competing against everybody else who's been doing it for twenty, thirty years. That, that's already, you know, having digs built in, the rain dates and everything, so we were. Limited then on the vendors, but we found one, weren't two, uh they reached out to us, or Ray reached out to them. Early and um got on their calendar.
Yeah.
So, but then, you know, as Michelle said, you know, that cost savings got replaced by more activities. At the fireworks.
Which were brilliant, the kids loved the ponies, I was, I was, I was anti ponies and, but the ponies. Were the hit, the biggest hit of the thing, so I'll just say ponies are.
I mean, if you remember, you know, we just, you know, eh eh you know, we just had the fireworks before, and then we added food trucks, and then we added face painting. And now it's like, it's, it's more of an event to keep people there early, like an all day thing, instead of just coming there and then. Eating time to watch fireworks.
So currently, I think, uh from my standpoint, I think it's on the very last page where the breakdown is, I believe, we, we scrolled to that really quick. I don't wanna get it wrong, so. Yeah, he did a nice job on going. He said on each type of event.
Just real quick, it was just interesting, though, if we could really see how many people actually are Bladensburg residents who attend that event. But I think it's probably would be hard, challenging to get that kind of head account witness.
Yeah, it's, it's the one nice thing that we, I mean, the one thing that we have. There, there are software programs that we probably could use, but they're expensive to do it, but.
You're cashing with cell phone data.
Yeah, with the cell phone data, it's actually, that's the best way to do it, but um councilwoman, um Brown, I think. Yeah, I would say that, I would say probably a third of it is probably our residents, like I would say safely, I mean, anybody else wanna guess, but I would.
That sounds about right, and then you have the poor towns folks on the Comart Manor side that um show up. But um yeah, I would say no more than thirty to like fifty percent are residents. If I had to guess, but I think you're right, if we wanted to invest in like ethanol metrics or some sort of technology that would allow us to um. Track it. I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, I just don't know, like what would we do with that information, would we. Charge people for coming or something, if they're out of towners, or, you know, what would we do?
Yeah, I think, I don't know, but I mean, I, I know that we've gotten some, some quotes for some of those programs. And they've been, they've been, they've been pretty expensive for some of the, because they're used by marketing companies. And we even asked the Economic Development Authority, eh that they could help us to purchase it, and they said it was too expensive for them, which. Is the issue, but um I, we could definitely come, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I mean, it's crazy just to see, um, yeah, my wife purchased software, it's, it's just, you know. I mean, it, it can show you like, you know, like how long people stay in area too, which is really neat, you know, so you can see what are hotspots. Um and the times, and, and then it builds your database and everything, it starts, you know, um it, it's really neat, it's really neat, you know, and it's a really good. Tourism tool.
We're using that um for my job, for our big nine thousand person event in May. Right, and so, but it's for that purpose to find out where, what's the human behavior, where are we going, gravitating towards, so we know where to invest more. In what people are most interested in, but again, it's, it's not cheap, and for that, because we have, uh we require registration. Everyone gets a badge, so the tracker is in that bag, so I'm just wondering, for this kind of open. Event where people can enter from multiple sides, how would we have like a main point to push people through? Yeah, could we do like a tracker, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
Something to think about.
We could look at that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I was just, I was just curious, it's um, we don't, you know.
Yeah, uh this is the total fireworks budget, uh Ray has projected at twenty seven thousand dollars, if you all can see it uh uh on your screens, council members. Um and really, uh the first time we did the fireworks, I think it was around twenty two thousand dollars, so.
Considering that was twenty eighteen, and it really hasn't gone up astronomically.
It's uh so what, so what the breakdown is right here, so it's the fireworks, entertainment, um. The restrooms, lighting, um other supplies, and that's really just sort of a interpretation. That's a, that's a more generalized, but I would say we spend around twenty six to thirty thou- I mean, twenty six thousand to thirty thousand dollars. If you, you know, with time, effort, all that kind of stuff for the fireworks, it's actually in your packet too.
And council member, I'm sorry, cause you're, you were talking, but I don't think other folks in the room could hear you, cause your volume was low, you were. Mentioning, um just going back to tracking the participants, I just wanted to make sure everybody could hear your comment. Council member Brown?
Okay, but I was trying to get to my, but I was saying, no, I was just, I was just curious, it's, you know, it's not, it's not that important, I was just curious, that's all.
It's, it's grown, that's what we were talking about, that it's grown over the year. Yeah, so that's, you can start off at ten to fifteen, and that's what it's grown to.
Okay, so that's.
That's July.
Um thank you.
Mayor, mayor, Michelle, I don't know if you guys can see, but Councilman Blunt is trying to say something.
Okay, sorry, this, when the screen is shared, I can't see uh um everybody, I apologize, council member Blunt.
No, question, the food vendors, um the trucks, I'm sorry, the trucks, do we charge a fee for them, or they just?
We did, we are starting to charge a fee, I believe, for that event, because it's such a large event. The other ones, we do not, because we are, but we have started, I think you started to register them. And this year, we will probably charge a small amount, we don't charge, you know, thousands of dollars. Um for that event yet, but we, but because we've been trying to build it over the years.
And now is a good time, because the um, the challenge that we have is people say they're coming, and then. The day of, they don't show up, and we end up short, and for that many people, you can't just have two vendors.
Yeah, because um, but, but they're very, they're very expensive.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this year is a really good opportunity, council, to, to test that out and to be able to charge the vendors a little bit more, because. Yeah, we do have a track record of income, it's just, I think, as Ray's been trying to build these events, especially even with Bladesburg Day. Those events to build them up, that's what we've been working with some of the vendors, so that we can, you know, recharge them, there's, we, we, it's been hit or miss. I, I, with some of the events, this is a very popular event, you're right, we should be charging vendors, and we will, we will come back with a. But that is part of the package.
But where Miss Blunt, or Councilmember Blunt was going, was just the cost of the food. And I think it was seniors specifically who complained about it, and that's the hard part for us, because. I mean, we, when we're pursuing them, yes, we can ask, you know, can you give our residents a break, but.
You charge the price, but if you charge them at an event like that, that price gonna go up more.
That's, that's the issue, so it's like, I think it's a half a dozen, you know, it's like.
Like a discount for our residents, but then we don't know all the residents.
Right, so I, I, I was just wondering if we can get, I prefer not to charge them and have them to go down on their prices. Because I think a pizza was eight dollars a slice.
Mm hmm. But I tell you, it's still cheaper than Six Flags or somebody's amusement.
Well, I, I, the ca- I think councilwoman, the issue that we, I mean, what we tried to do with the seniors is that we tried to offer some. We did try to offer some food, but then we were competing with the vendors, you know, because of the, the low cost, but. I can't, I don't think I've been to an event where you can buy a pizza for eight dollars, only like right now, I mean, it's not.
Not about the seniors, I mean, anybody that's there, that's a high price, not just the seniors.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, prices are high, yeah.
A lot of traffic down there too, people trying to get to the food and trying to get to the other, like, you know, events and everything, it's. I guess it's a good problem to have, I mean, we have that much traffic there, but, you know, it's. But as you said, you know, councilman, I mean, it's very, you know, we're at the um. Will of what they're charging, and at the same time, we try to offer a um uh uh the different food options.
Yeah.
So you don't want two pizza vendors there competing against each other, um so we try to get like one more and one more, you know, so.
And the other thing too, that we're challenged with is food trucks are so popular now, that this is for some people their primary business. And they're just, they're trying to make that money, I think if Ray could reach out, and we don't have to. But at least if, when he's reaching out to them to ask for some rates or something, to say, we've got the volume, so you're going to make money, anything you can do. To um provide a discount to our folks would be appreciated, but I get it's their business and their prices.
Even reaching out to like the Boy Scouts or someplace, you know, like for fundraising, you know, to sell like.
Yeah, well, I mean, I talked to the, I talked to the, I talked to the fire department about doing that. You know, to being one of the vendors, so that we could have something that's reasonably priced, and then having something like that, so then have.
Cause we could do it, well, maybe if, like if the women's auxiliary did it, and then. That's right, cause they've got the uh cotton candy and all that stuff.
So how about we do this, so that we can, so that, here's two, here's two things.
What covers the ten thousand dollars?
Which ten thousand dollars are you talking about?
The fireworks vendor. Yeah.
And the nine thousand covers the DJ and.
It's all the entertainment, so we have the bounce houses, all that kind of stuff is there, yes.
The um, the pony ride.
Pony rides, the face painters, all that stuff is all in that, yeah. So what we can do from, from this, just from the standpoint is that, once, when we're reviewing the vendors, we can one, ask for a menu to get how much the prices are. And then be able to go through that, and that will be shared with the overall committee that's working on the boat, the, 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 the event. And then we can also work with some nonprofits to see if we can get some lower cost food options, does that make sense?
Yeah, how many restrooms do we go to?
We have to rent, the rent, we do both through the porta potties, and we do the rental of the restrooms at the park, but cause they have to, it's a cleanup fee.
Alright, so we have sixteen more to get through, and let's find, no, I just wanna.
But, but that is our largest one.
Yeah.
Uh by far, you know, so.
We need to be done by what time?
Seven.
Seven. Alright.
I was, I didn't realize that we were gonna go, I'm sorry about that, so we can also go through these more in depth. But I just think you wanted to see the whole, I mean, I, I mean, we can have a whole discussion about the events, a little bit more in depth.
Yeah, you wanna walk us through.
Yeah, so we've got.
The senior gathering.
Senior gathering at the waterfront park, that's also, the details are in there for that. Um domestic violence awareness is also, um these are smaller events, growing green with pride as a very low cost event, I think we spent over five hundred dollars for that. Bladesburg Day is one of our larger events, I think he has estimated that's going to be about eight to ten thousand dollars Bladesburg Day in general. Um Veterans Day, very low cost event, whether or not we spend five hundred dollars on a real catered meal, or we go to the uh. I would go to the uh the, 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 the legion, and then the turkey distribution. Those are the ones that we'll need to get some feedback on, because last year we paid for the turkey distribution. Because last year we paid for the turkey distribution out of ARPA. And that would then be, we put those as separate, separated items for decision points. Because we spend about fifty dollars a basket for those, for that, for that event. So when we do a hundred, it's five thousand, yeah, so it's 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 it becomes, it becomes a lot, a lot. So we're spending twenty five thousand.
Okay, this is my question line, um we're talking about turkey, right? Why do we use, uh why don't we purchase these things for like in a wholesale and above instead of retail?
We are so.
Even though, is it because we're partnering with?
We are partnering with Victory or we're partnering with the Now Foundation so that we can help another local nonprofit to do it. They are buying in bulk for the turkeys. The turkeys are not retail, we've actually bought the turkeys at a wholesale price. They're buying. Yeah, the canned goods are like, are, no, there's, it's really about a dollar, I mean, the canned goods are like twelve dollars for the whole thing. It's, I mean, turkeys have been expensive, to be honest with you, and chickens are expensive, so it's like.
I actually mentioned that it was my attention that it was purchased or in sales.
So is it more, it's more of the, maybe it's from the standpoint that I've seen them bring stuff in, let's say from Dollar Tree, like for, and those and those nonprofits, they're they're using those. I mean, if we can work with a partner that's getting, that's getting, let's say, wholesale food, I think that would be a better way to do this. It's just the staff doesn't have, we don't have the resources to manage the whole thing. Unless that is the desire of council for us to do, you know, to 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 kind of research doing a wholesale. But what we've been doing is working with those nonprofits. So I think it could be a change in the way that we do it. And what we're also suggesting is maybe to not do two distributions, to do one distribution. Uh and continue the senior distributions that you do, cuz you're doing several at the holidays.
But I think they're looking forward to the whole turkey for uh Thanksgiving and Christmas.
The Christmas one has been, I mean, I think we got less people this year for Christmas than we've gotten, than we got in previous years. Um I think that was the, that we, at my understanding is that we did get, I think we had about a hundred left over from Christmas this year.
Yeah, and.
In the community, I'm just saying, we had, but we didn't have as many on site, I guess.
People didn't show up to pick them up. We did more deliveries. The positive thing, though, is when we deliver, because we're taking it into Bladesburg, we're guaranteed that. But at the same time, I wanted to ask if, I mean, if we do both, would everyone be comfortable reducing the number? Because especially at the Christmas distribution, I mean, there were so many bags left over. That that last hour, we started loading up and, you know, dropping in the neighborhood. And the whole point is, is for people in need, if they're not showing up and they don't need the food, we don't need to force it. Maybe it's a hundred and fifty and when they're gone, they're gone versus doing it at that scale.
Yeah, but residents were registering and and we're going by the registration, right? So they're not showing up, we don't know if they're gonna show up, so.
That's true.
You could limit the registration number though, because we have it right now open till four hundred. If we limit it to a hundred and fifty and we get a list of two hundred, because we have that twenty percent break off. We could, we know that we're gonna get a certain number of people and when it closes early from that, you know it's closed.
That makes sense.
Councilmember Blunt, you were saying something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so many people giving away baskets, I mean, lots of people.
That's true.
Yeah, cuz I remember that one year we competed with the community center.
That's right. Yep. And I don't know if they'll do it again, but there was a period of time where the county execs office was doing four thousand.
Yeah.
Um at Six Flags or one year was at FedEx and it's around the same time, so.
So maybe we could reduce the number of registrants.
So we can bring that back to you, that's what, that's the kind of feedback we need, so we'll bring you back those numbers, that's it, you can take a look at that. Um in the spring, um we can keep on scrolling down, I think at page three. Uh we've got the Yule Log, which and and that's, that's not inexpensive, um. And there's again with senior budget, councilwoman Blunt does a good job of keeping hers at a certain amount for both of her events. So that's never been more than, I think it's in a five K combined for both, right? Or less than that, and she does a really good job of keeping those um on task and target. Um again, this is that holiday meal distribution that we're looking at, MLK Day of Service. We don't hardly pay, we, that's like just water, we don't, we don't put any additional money into that, Black History Month, it'll attend every year. Um Green Event in April, we're trying to partner with the other towns, Mental Health Awareness. Uh that's one that we'll need to kind of figure out, I think last year we spent about thirty five hundred with the rental of the space. And then Memorial Day is also very simple, less than five hundred dollars, it's just the um, it's the picture out of committee. And then Juneteenth, Ray does that one pretty inexpensively, I think we spend less than fifteen hundred dollars on Juneteenth, and I think it's a really nice event. That he always does in the park and it's kind of meaningful, then he does a good job on that one.
I thought we increased, um is it nine hundred and thirty dollars?
Yeah, five hundred, that's what I'm saying, they're not, those are five hundred, I mean, it's, they're not, five hundred gibberish, those are not. I like to do this, you know, I I like, I like the Legion, you know, even I don't hate the Legion, I love the Legion's prices. I think their prices are amazing, but anyways, no, we will, we need to give the Legion more.
Okay, so just in terms of cuts, so you'll look at the holiday meal distributions in terms of making the number like one fifty to two hundred.
And scale that for you, yeah.
All right, let's stop sharing this.
And and so and Ray kind of broke it down to midsize, small and medium events, which was a really good part of his presentation. And he'll be happy to come back and talk with the council more if he wants to on this, but he does a really good job at events.
Job, yes, he did.
He did.
Okay, so that's the, do you wanna go to the council budget, cuz we got twenty seven.
I don't see, um.
Marketing.
What do you mean by market, for the events?
Yeah.
So we do, we use, we have that as part of our Facebook marketing, we do the Facebook, we do use that. That's not, we don't, we don't put it in our budget, we put it in general as part of a mark, we have an overall marketing line item. And Ray does most of the stuff himself, so it's all in, like even the flyers, we don't write those out initially, yeah. So yeah, that's a, we sort of absorb it onto one line item outside of each one.
All right, um councilmembers on the line.
Yeah, any questions before, cuz I can't see you guys, I'm, I just wanna make sure.
No, I'm good for now.
Okay, councilmember McBride?
Okay, so the mayor council budget, having three columns here. At FY twenty four budget, FY twenty five budget, FY twenty six budget, what couldn't fit here is the actuals. But the actuals are tracking pretty close anyway. Um and you see, the largest change is the uh health insurance. Um and and that is just based on uh enrollment options. Um and you're gonna see this follow not only through mayor and council, but also through all the other department budgets as well.
Seventeen percent though?
It looks like a lot because. Yeah, I mean, from forty five to fifty three.
Yeah.
In this, in the scheme of the health insurance, the total health insurance. It's, it's very miniscule.
Right. But to your budget, because it's so much of your budget, that's the reason why it looks huge.
Yeah.
Your salaries and your, and your health insurance are like the amount of the same price. So that's, it's seventeen percent of your, it's a seventeen percent increase of your total budget. Versus that's what that number is, it's a percentage increase of your total budget.
Just of the health insurance line item, but but total health insurance is eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. Budget for next year.
Yeah.
So the fifty three thousand, you know, is a small percentage, um because it's just the the five of you all. So you're gonna see any um changes, you know, are are gonna be more. Um I was asking, but more on.
Little bit of offside with our pension helps.
Yeah.
Eighteen percent reduction.
Um and that is just based on um the, we pay about, I wanna say. About nine point eight percent total, well, well, it's a seventy percent mandatory match the town makes. That's one side of it, but then the state's gotta make up their other portion, so they charge another three to four percent of admin fees on top of that. So, yeah, so house always wins, um. Okay, the rest of the budget I kept pretty, um I didn't change much. But what I did increase is the council business development. Um just because there's so many conferences and everything and that's where, you know, you get to see, you know, interact with the other peers and everything. Um we talked a lot here at council meetings about, you know, you know, MML and NLC, um. Um the PG, PG CMA, um and everything. Uh but PG CMA is local, but I'm just talking about in in total business development. So we did increase that, again, it looks like a large increase of fifteen percent, but you're going from twenty six thousand to thirty thousand. You know, it's not like hundred thousand to hundred fifty thousand, so. Um you're talking about smaller numbers here, so so any kind of change is gonna look more pronounced. And just as um uh placeholders, I kept everything else the same. Uh because again, that's up to the mayor and council discussion.
For the employee recognition, are we on track to expand the fifteen?
Yeah, yes.
Said that is done for this year.
Mm hmm. Um, yes, definitely, and really with everything going up. Again, with food prices going up and everything, I mean, that that, I mean, that could be a twenty, you know, the casher at all, that could probably be a twenty thousand dollar line item.
Well, the other question I have, cuz I believe for the holiday thing in December, we had less people there this time around. At least it felt that way as compared to twenty twenty three. So is it better, while I like that luncheon, is it better just to make it easier for people to attend and do something here? It's not as nice, but I feel like it's not, is it, it's not worth it, in my opinion, if more people can't come. And enjoy the luncheon and it did, and tell me if I'm wrong, cuz everybody was there.
I, you know me, I'm like, you're, you're asking the wrong person.
Everyone except Michelle.
What do you think? Cuz I was like, I have, I've gone, we, I've tried to make sure that this is like something that we're not just. You know, doing something at town hall with people and we tried, and I think also, is this the cruises too?
Yes.
So this is also the cruises, so I was like, you know, I I guess the.
It can't be.
That's part of the recognition, yes, we add the cruises in there, so that's your, those, all those events are in there.
Got it.
Employee cruise is also in there.
So chief, tell us what you think, the, like with the um, the Christmas luncheon. It just, as I said, it felt like less people showed up less last year. And it's similar to when we tried to do it at the restaurant on a Saturday, it's like we just wanna learn from the behavior of people aren't showing up. So do you think it's worth continuing that in December or just doing something here instead?
I thought that it was too small to have, um isn't it too small in there to have a, a nice event in the town hall?
We have to cater it.
It is, so we would definitely have to cater it. And that you could splurge a little bit more just to make it nicer, but you're right, council member, it's just the space is the issue here.
Thanks, yes, and we, we don't wanna get in trouble.
Right.
What about a solution where we do a survey to find out from everybody? Um why did they're not showing up, is there something that we need to do differently instead of like just get it going?
I think we had like forty, forty five people there.
Yeah, I think we had a nice. And I think personally, I think we should continue to invest in in employees. Just just show them some, you know, some class, some, something better than just being here eating sandwiches.
And we also did a separate, like we did cater for the people that couldn't come to that. We do catering for, I think that's what this other line item, thank you, chief, cuz I was gonna say. We do catering for the officers who can't make some of these things for that as well. And we also at that luncheon, we did to go for people from that, so they did, there were, employees did get to participate. So I just, so I I guess the question is that, long term, that's a, you know, this is a line item that. It may be future budgets, you may not be able to be as generous, but we do have it in there now. Yeah, so I think that's the, I would say that, so I'm like, before I give everybody peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, I'll say that ahead of that.
And and about just said.
And this, and let me, let me say something, chief, I'm sorry, just real quick, and I and I agree with you, chief, I think we can continue to invest in our people and have a nice quality event. So um I I I agree with that.
I agree too, yeah, but I do understand what you.
It just felt emptier than the previous year.
Are you talking, you talking about busboys and poets? We talking about busboys and poets? I don't know, it seemed pretty cool to me, but I think we should still have a quality event for for our people. Um and maybe get a head count and or wanna do something like that, but definitely not at the town hall.
Yeah.
And just so everybody know, so I do, um and it's something that we do amongst the agencies nearby. So when Mulroney has their employee appreciation day, we will cover the road for them. So all the employees can go and they do the same for us. So they all have an option to go and we make, you know, provisions for them to go by covering the streets so the streets are never. Uh unsecure. Um but some will say, I prefer to just work the road and then we'll, we'll send lunch back for them.
Yeah, we're sending lunch back, yeah.
So everybody's is taken care of, but I I think it's a nice turnout. You know, if somebody has a mandatory training or something like that, they they have to go.
Right.
You know, they have court, they have to go.
Yeah, I think we have forty five, because we do do an e-vite.
Maybe because it's so big and the way it was set up was different.
Oh, I messed it all up. And I just looked, said, you know what, the bloom was green and. I don't, cuz I said, what'd you say? She said, I can't repeat it.
In full disclosure, I I was one of the first ones to have just changed it to something different.
Something like the cocker spaniel or something.
But I do agree that the cruise. Yeah, but the cruise seems to be something that's happened. So that stays. Is that good with you?
It's like, yeah, don't ask me going out, we're rich as.
Yeah, that's good with me.
Okay.
Mister Vito, um, Madam Megan?
Yes.
Um, I just have one question, Mister Vito, um so in regards to the workman comes. Like everything I shoot up like increased, but it remained the same consistent.
Um that's because you're a very low risk group, uh falling down or getting injured on the job, yeah. So it, and you'll see that go through the, you'll see that go go through the admin departments as well. Now, when we get to public safety and just by the nature of the work, that's ninety percent of premiums. A- actually eighty five percent of premiums and and public works is fifteen percent of premiums. Um and and it's like one percent goes to admin and mayor and council, just because, you know. We sit behind computers all day and computers will learn, jump out and bratless and.
Yeah, I think it should be rated higher.
Yeah, so. Um, let's see what else real quick, community grants.
We missed the discretionary fund, so we still have the five hundred dollars per council member for discretionary funds. To give to local organizations um for projects that are helping Bladesburg. And it's been flat uh over, I don't know how many years, but it seems to be okay. Um at the twenty five hundred dollar amount total. Any concerns or questions, yes?
No, I gotta, I wanna go back on the uh on the student, on the scholarships, are we still giving those out?
We have it.
We gave one out at the beginning of fiscal year, or no, that's towards an ARPA.
We used to, we used a portion for the the um senior, a little bit. We used to, we used a portion for the, the, um, senior, a little bit. Feet in the, I guess the awards program that you guys asked, that we did use, we're using a portion for that. Because that is for the, the, the sponsorship they asked for. I don't know if that's what you guys want to do, but that was.
I thought we had, the council had moved to do a scholarship for local students going to. Junior colleges or trade schools, but I think we put the money in here. But the follow-up may need to happen with putting the actual application.
So do you want us to put application out, okay.
Not this year, but last year, I got a request from a council poor student, but this year I didn't.
So what we need to do is put on application probably now, so that we can get something back.
And that way we can send it to the school counselors at Bladensburg International High School and, um, Elizabeth Seaton, burning residence.
Is it, is it a thousand, is it five hundred, or is it the whole five thousand?
When we started up, I thought it was like dividing it at one thousand per.
Thousand per, okay, thank you, all right, so we will come up with an item, so that's the, so staff will follow up on that and get that out to the schools. And send that out in the next memo so that you guys can see what.
And how do we, I like these students, once they get it, how do we?
So what we can do is we can put together a process so that you guys can make a selection, and we can provide information on the students too, so that you can do that. So if you, that's what you would like, is a, a kind of like the way we did the community grant and put together an application, but in regards to that, and then bring that to the council, the council would approve it.
Okay.
If that's, if they're fine, we'll put together a process for that for you. For the students.
Mm-hmm. So that way we get the applications, we can review them, and then the council will determine who the recipients will be.
I have one more question, um, did we do, um. What's the, what do you use, well, I want to be a mayor or something.
Yeah, this is the time to do the school visits and encourage people, I gotta take some time off to get out there and do some visits.
If I were mayor.
Asking for something.
Yeah, one is up to this. I will look it up, I like, we'll look that up.
So, um, and then we have the community grants, which we budgeted, uh, twelve thousand dollars on an application basis. And two thousand dollar grant each, that's how we put it in the budget.
Last year we did four, three, three.
Something ahead, yeah.
Eco City, um, that royalty institute, the Kanku, I think we done three most last year.
The, the community events, I increased this because we had talks about doing a boys', boys' and girls' club. Um, so that, that's where the increase is there.
Why is the insurance liability is fifty percent, is it because of?
No, that's actually, um, based on claims, as a claims made basis for all the legit members. And the, and all the legit members are your, all, all the municipalities and the counties, or some of the smaller counties, I should say.
Okay.
So everybody's, you know, you know, it only takes two or three claims, you know, over here to make everybody's go up. Yeah, and again, we're talking about smaller amounts here, you know, two thousand and three thousand. Now, you're gonna see it increase again on the larger side. Our service side, you know, the public safety and, and public works, um, because they carry more liability.
Okay. Council member Blunt?
I wanted to go back real, real fast about the community grants, I know, I know we. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it, it starts out good and then it drops on your.
Um, now.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, um, I know before, um, Michelle, you talked about changing the language and on the grants.
Yeah.
Um, you still planning to do that?
Yes, and I, and I'll send that to you guys before we issue the new one, so I'll send that out in a memo in the next couple of weeks so that we can, I know that we talked about it. It was more because we wanted, you wanted more information about the groups themselves, correct, councilwoman? Like about what they've done, the community and who they're serving, and to kind of give more information about what they're doing. And I, I, I did get back an interesting thing from, uh, Eco Farms is actually gonna send you guys a report of what they did with the money. In the community so that you can get that, and so I thought that is probably a nice reporting process, that we didn't have that as a feature before. But I was gonna add that as well, so that they would give us, give the council an annual report to say what did they do with the money, and how it, how it impacted the community.
All right, that's good, all right, thanks.
And then council member Blunt, was it you or somebody else, I'm trying to remember, that had mentioned the application seemed a little cumbersome. For that amount of money?
I think I did.
We had, okay, so in the past, we, we had streamlined application, and then we beefed it up. To, um, make sure people were, um, fully vetted through the application process. And by doing that, you increase, I mean, it, it increased by pages and pages and amount of documentation they had to submit. And we're getting less applicants, because people don't want to give all that information to the government. I mean, really, you know, when it comes down to, I mean, it's hard for people to open their books sometimes, um. But, and, and, and then we streamlined it some more, you know, to get more people to apply. So it's gone, you know, up and down on, uh, what we've asked for.
You know, was any of it from the auditors themselves, so have they had any issues with what we're asking?
Okay, because, because it's an important amount, but it's a low amount compared to the total expenditures. And what the auditors would look for is, is that we just, you know, went through an established process, signed off on. Check procedures, payment procedure, I mean, you know, that's what they're really looking for, because it's already been established by mayor and council.
Okay.
And it's in the minutes that are sent to them every year too, and they, they read over all the minutes. And, and do have questions, um, about council meetings, um, as, as they read through, through the minutes.
So we could send something back to council in regards to this, I think in some ways, my, what I heard is, like, we want to know. How this, how they're, what they're gonna do in Bladensburg, how have we served Bladensburg, and that was an issue before. And I think the other issue is that in some ways, making it, maybe some of the information I did find a little bit more complicated than we needed, and people had some problems answering it. So what we'll do is we'll take a look at the application and try to streamline it, and then we'll send it out to council before it's sent out. Because I think where we are now, we're, we're pretty early in the process, um, because, are we issuing for this year? Or next year?
For.
Uh, that's right. For FY twenty five, we have to get them out, so.
But we actually took money out of this year's budget.
No, this year's budget is still at the same amount.
Okay, so. No, because we, what happened, we did it in the thirteenth month before FY twenty five was closed out. It's an accounting term, July is the thirteenth. The year isn't done, they're still closing everything.
Yeah.
It was obligated in that part.
Obligated, it was obligated twenty four, so we do need to put out twenty five, so what we'll do is put out twenty five now, pretty soon. Okay, that's why I was like, you're right, because it seems like we just did it, but we did it, we were late.
That means we gotta get the word out.
So there'll be two things that we'll, you'll see soon, is one, the, um, the, the scholarship and two, this month for this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yeah, and.
Anything for wild communication FY twenty five?
Prior, we gave, um, uh, cell phone reimbursement monthly, um, to each council member. Um, and that was, and, and that was discontinued because we got the town to shoot cell phones now. And that's really to protect you all because of Public Information Act, so you don't have to give your own cellphone out. You just, you know, give a town cellphone, and it doesn't have your personal information on it.
The other question is regarding the senior communities, do we want to keep this in? Because I think in the one case, or maybe two, I don't even know if those councils are. They're convening and doing.
Do you know, do this approach it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I think you all should still keep that in there, even, I know before, uh, some time ago, when we didn't have a council. The money went to the, our management company, and we still carried out the, um, duties of. How they do that, I don't know how they do that whole program, but I think they need that money, because a lot of times they don't fund.
I think it's like this, you know.
And is it us causing it to drop?
Are there any other things?
So membership's still flat for this year at twenty thousand, and that's for MML and NLC, PG CMA and COG.
I think COG might go up a tad, I, I saw that they sent us another increase.
Okay.
Can you hear me, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Can, can you remove that blue line?
Oh, yeah. No, he, he had it highlighted.
Oh.
It's highlighted on, on our side, but public looks. Yeah.
Mr. Vito?
Uh, yes.
Um, so in regards to, I know we were trying to move forward, moving on to the town meetings, um, a hundred percent increase. You said you moved into the town administrative budget?
Yeah, because, um, historically, we've had, um, this line item split between, um, mayor and council and, and, and town administration. Um, so it's a total of eleven thousand dollars that you'll see on the town administrator's budget. The six thousand from the mayor and council plus additional five thousand, um, uh, for more meeting expenses. And that's just, you know, that's not just for these meetings, it's the, when we host port towns, um, the. Production, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and in some ways, I wanted not for your budget overall to go up more than like five to seven percent. And right now you're at seven percent, I put it in my budget, so that if there's a, you know, you can always blame the town administrator's budget of it being. My, my budget going over higher than yours, because I don't want you guys to have to, to have that in your budget. So, yes, I just said move it into mine, because it'll be, it's the same expense, it's just that it's still becoming out of one of you other budgets.
Thank you.
And as far as trying to split up, you know, what's exactly mayor and council versus town administrator, because a lot of times, you know, we're using the same services. So it's, um.
It was very easy to put under arms. Council member Blunt, were you trying to say something?
I said, thank you, Michelle.
Oh, okay. I wanted to make you look fiscally responsible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the mayor and council budget?
And again, this is our first, first one.
It actually falls under the town meetings. No, councilwoman, we, that's that town meetings flexible item, when you guys do your prayer breakfast stuff, that's when, that's how we, we do all catering underneath that budget. Yeah.
Are they planning that again this year?
Yeah, so we do those underneath there, so it's not, yeah, that's how we paid for it last year, under that town.
So nothing for computer?
As of right now, no. Unless there, unless there's a need.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be protective of the police budget.
I don't think this is a, is a, a good question, but does HR budget falls under?
It's gonna be under contractual services on our town administrator budget.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe most of our contractors, they'll be reflected under the town administrator budget. So legal, like for, um, Ms. Ferguson, our attorneys, consultants, things like that will be under there.
And the pu- public safety consultants are under the public safety budget, um.
Should we put our consultant under public safety? Just because they do the public safety grant. But then, I know, she started, she started clapping back. Yeah, my budget, my budget's gonna be, my budget needs to probably align a little bit more for the annexation.
For chief's budget.
Did y'all put the chief's budget in the emergency room?
The little chief, sure did say that, oh, man.
He said, put it in the emergency.
No, he said the chief.
Chief's credit card, shot with a cop, he said, he, you never know what he gonna say. But he said, y'all put the chief's credit card in the emergency room, because he just.
Right, right, yes, so, that, that's what we've got for tonight, are there any other questions, um, for mayor council budget, council events? I just want to make sure that we went through everything.
Oh, I think this is great, you did a good job now.
And you have time for what, a five minute?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you bio break, I'm gonna quit break. Council member Blunt, I'm running to the bathroom, wait, I gotta adjourn, sorry. That is important. Uh, so with that, we'll call tonight's meeting to, uh, to a close, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by council member McBride, is there a second? Sorry, seconded, seconded by council member Dixon, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Aye, any nays, the ayes have it.